Welcome, everybody, to the Penn Traffic School Board's Business Meeting for Monday, October the 8th, 2018. We will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And before we do that, would the Scouts in attendance like to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
That's neat. Put them right up here.
Come on up, gentlemen. You can stand right here and you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, have roll call, please.
Mrs. Izing, here.
You requested it. You go, she requested it.
Mr. Kachasek.
Here.
Dr. Koschka is not here. Mr. Bill Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Dallas Leonard is absent. Mr. Matarazzo?
Here.
Mr. Nemec?
Here.
Mr. Petrusi?
Here.
And Mr. Stovar?
Here.
And Dr. Koschka might be running late, so you might see him coming out.
Okay.
He's just in Texas. He's almost there.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 10th meeting?
Okay.
Second question. Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Information. Dr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasek. This past Friday, I got a great announcement that the Division of Federal Programs honors, who honors the top performing Title I schools in Pennsylvania, recognized two of our schools, Harrison Park and McCullough. For this past year, they were named as two of our top Title I performing schools, which base, basically, everything is done based on the results of last year's PSSA's scores. They were in the top 5% of, for math and reading, at both of the schools. So it was great to see that two of our schools were named to our list. There was 158, excuse me, Title I distinguished schools across the state of Pennsylvania. So I was very proud of both those schools. We are anxiously writing the public release of the data to see how we compare with the other school districts. Every one of our categories increased last year at the middle school, elementary, and high school, so I kind of want to see how we did overall. But receiving this letter, award notification, came as an early surprise, so it was very nice to see. In addition, last week, we also received a $60,000 grant from the State Schools Grant for an SRO officer. Thanks, Mr. Cap, who actually spearheaded the grant. We've been writing this one since 2007 because it was out there, you could apply for it every year, and they choose so many schools. Most of the criteria is based on State Schools data. Luckily for us, we don't have a total number of incidents that are too high, so we was never considered at need. But over the years, we just kept applying, and we actually got it this year or so. I do appreciate it from the state. I want to thank everyone who made last week Spear Week Homecoming and Deer Valley Week a success. It was a great week for the students and a good kickoff to October. I want to thank all my parent volunteers that went to Deer Valley, all my teacher volunteers who organized Spear Week Homecoming, as well as attended Deer Valley for three other days, giving up time with their family. And I want to thank all the admin and for the work they did, and of course, the school board for financially supporting all of us. So it was a great week last week. Another reminder, October 19th, at our next home football game against Hampton, that's the game that we recognize all the members of the military, current and retired, rescue workers, our police, our firemen, public works, Rescue Six, as well as the faith community who helps serve our schools. We invite them to the football game. We do a special service for them during the game on October 19th. So I'm going to pass out the invitations to each board member, and if you see anyone that you know that fits that category, please feel free to pass out an invitation to them. I did send out a connect ad last week. You might have seen it. Colleen actually did it. That went out to our school families. And we also do contact, we will contact this weekend, all the rescue workers. We kind of send it to the chiefs, as well as the faith community. We do send them an invitation, so that's taken care of, too. But if you know anyone personal, it's sometimes nice to get a personal invitation hand-delivered to you, so feel free to pass those out. Actually, Mr. Matarazzo started that process two years ago.
Dr. Harris, can you share what St. Barbara's does for our kids after every home game?
After every home game? This is a success. I'm not sure how many kids have been going, maybe, I know St. Barbara's, they represent St. Barbara's, but after every home game, they actually have, they host an event, and I don't want to call it a dance, it's probably more of a gathering for all of our students.
Fifth quarter, I think. They call it the after-party.
The after-party. They call it the after-party. And I actually went two different times, you know, to see, just to kind of see what it was like. It was kind of fun. It was packed. I mean, I know they must have 150 to 300 students.
They have like 400 students.
400?
That's what I was told. 350 to 400 students.
I know last year was 300-plus. It's probably bigger this year. Page four.
It's, I think it's great that they do that. It gives our kids something safe to do after the party, after the football game that continues tonight. They have games. There was usually a little barn, a fire they have going. Kids are very well behaved. I mean, I've seen it twice. I know, Mr. Nemec, have you stopped in? Your wife's on the...
My wife had participated in it.
Of course, as well.
And it's, I've said this before, it gets great support from the community, local businesses. I know some of the pizza shops, some of the restaurants, they provide, you know, food and drink for it. Even some of the, like the local, other local churches, they donate money to help fund it because it's not limited to just St. Barbara children. It's, any, any school district, any child belongs there in school, they're welcome to come to it.
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity, and I appreciate the fact that they always think of us for that. Finally, the policies that are offered tonight deals with school board meetings, textbooks, adoption, and the drones. Just want to kind of go over some, highlight some of those changes, so when you see it later, kind of know what we're talking about. Couple of different things that involve the school board meetings. I'll just give you some of the highlights instead of reading the whole thing cover to cover. Basically, it was updated to reflect the new executive decision, session provision, because now you can talk about safety concerns during executive session. It was also updated to change the voting requirements for lacking a president. It was also changed the timeframe for school directors to receive agendas that include a line item regarding removal of an officer of the board. Other changes throughout the policy address consistency and terminology, public participation, and clarification in voting procedures. And a new section was adding to the policy regarding abstaining from voting. There's a couple of changes. The textbooks, basically, there was new policy for the review process. They also updated a policy and admin regulations to address modern practices for review, evaluation, recommendation, and adoption of digital textbooks. Illegal citation was added to the section of the PA State Regulations regarding Chapter 14, Special Education Services and Programs, and access to instructional materials. So there were some changes to those. The new one that we actually have not had a policy before is the drone policy. And this is actually, basically, the gist of all the drones is, use of drones on school property will be strictly prohibited except as provided immediately thereafter. And the two, couple of justifications to use a drone, you have to be a school employee or students who are authorized to use the drones. A community group can get permission from the superintendent or the designated to use the drones. The authorized drone operator will comply with all FAA requirements and provide proof of compliance to the superintendent. The authorization should indicate all acknowledgment that the employee and/or student understands the term and conditions of the district's permission to fly drones on or over school district property and agree to comply with all district policies. The superintendent or his designated will request proof of drone operator's experience. The district retains the right to withhold authorization if the drone operator's experience cannot be verified. So those are some of the highlights to our new drone policy. Basically, if you're going to use a drone, you need permission from someone at the school. We can talk more about that if you want to, if you have any questions during voting on those policy changes.
Dr. Harris, we have a little bit of a problem. Some of the pages of the board motions didn't get copied into the book, so we're just having prob, I'm not going to be able to get those printed into the members, so I'm going to pass my laptop around whenever it comes to that person.
Okay.
So they're ready. What? Is it the same as the earlier draft?
Yeah.
Then we're fine.
No, it's not the same as the earlier draft. There's an added action item to the draft that you received in the mail and the draft that I received in the mail. There's an added item.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I don't know. Is there only one that was added?
Is that the one I'm reading?
That was in the draft.
What are you referring to, Mr. Bronco? What's...
The negotiation.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
It's in there, right?
It's in. Yeah, I have it right here.
Yeah, it's in there. Right here. I know.
Page two, four, and six didn't get printed.
Correct.
Page two, and four, and six didn't get printed, but we have them on the screen here, so you can use that.
We're making work. And that's all I have for information.
Good job, Mr. Ingles.
We'll get through this. All right, thank you, Dr. Harris.
Yeah, mine is.
That page is. We're going to do recognition, before I jump the recognition visitor, I want a quick comment about Deer Valley. I was very fortunate to attend this year with my daughter. What an amazing program that was. I don't know what I, what I expected. It just blew me away. The program keeps these kids from, the moment they get off that bus and the minute they leave, they've got them doing stuff. And it is a testament to the program itself. My daughter gets home and was already ready, she says she was already ready to go back because they keep them so busy and so focused. The program is amazing. Anybody who ever has a chance to go up there, I would highly recommend it. I'm so proud that Penn Traffic offers that program to our elementary students. And it was just, it was very, very eye-opening and a fantastic couple of days up there in the mountains. So I appreciated the opportunity to be there. We are going to do recognition of visitors right now. Okay, it's time for audience recognition. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no participant may address or question a board member individually. I may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Now, I'm going to make a slight change to that. We have PAC 236 Den Number 7. Welcome to you, gentlemen. I know you're probably here to earn your badge, and you have some questions for us. Now, I don't know, if you want to come up individually or as a group, that's fine, and ask your questions. Now, I can't guarantee I'll have the answer, so this one time, I'm going to let any board member who wishes to, they can chime in with an answer. We'll treat it like a quiz round. So, guys, if you want to come on up and ask your questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Just tell me over the microphone.
They may want to go to the microphone, it may be easier for them, but it's pretty...
Why is detention not given at sunrise?
Well, Dr. Harris, I will let you in.
Why is it not given at sunrise? You're going to have to actually ask Dr. Koener for that, I'm sorry. Because every school kind of handles something a little bit differently. Would you like detention at sunrise? You wouldn't like it? Okay.
Maybe there's no bad kids at sunrise.
I don't know. You just want to know why it's not given as a punishment?
Is it building-specific, so principals can make their own determinations, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, each building's a little bit, they handle, like the discipline and everything.
Each building has a, has a principal, and that principal has the authority to have detention, and I guess that principal, that person, has the ability to create detention if they choose. So I guess Mr. Leonard had it right. Arrest me no bad kids at sunrise.
Just stating the obvious.
Before they, before they answer the question, they can, if they don't mind, they can say who they are. Just their name?
That was a good question. Real good question.
And then, state your name.
I am Gavin Neko, and why do teachers sometimes change grades from year to year? Is it their choice?
That's a question you can answer. Do you understand what he asked?
It's based on staffing needs and enrollment. Sometimes our enrollment changes from year to year. We sometimes have, and we might have 80 kids in grade five the first year, but next year you might have 60, so you only need one less teacher. And then sometimes we have to, it goes the other way. Sometimes you have 60 kids in fourth grade, and then not, there's only two teachers, so they might have to go up with their students, too. It's basically based on enrollment.
And sometimes we have retirements, and teachers will choose to move to a different building. They have the opportunity to do that.
I'm Raleigh Miro, and why do you participate on the school board?
Well, I guess any of us can answer that question. Well, Raleigh, for myself, I believe it's, if you're in your community, if you want to make the community better, it's your civic duty to volunteer, whether it's the school board or any other local organization, to give back to your community. So that's why, that's why I do it. It's, I want to make the community better, so I offer my time and I volunteer. In that stance, I don't know if any other board members want to comment on why they are a board member.
Maybe Mr. Petrusi, how many years?
Number 39.
39 years. Why so long, and why are you doing this?
My most important thing is you got to have a good superintendent. That makes the job very enjoyable, very challenging. And what's nice is working with people, seeing kids progress and graduate, and handle all different levels of kids, special needs kids, the kids are gifted, and make sure all these kids are treated fairly and equally. And always a challenge, too. Challenges always keep on coming up, no matter what it's in, athletics, extracurricular, personnel curriculum, any kind of academic. And also make sure principals, we mentioned Mrs. Koener, very excellent performance from her, make sure every building has a good principal because they are the chief administrator of that building. And elementary is our most important foundation for all the education that follows it. And for that to continue, it's been my pleasure, and come from a small town of Trafford, born and raised, and I always wanted to make sure that Trafford has some kind of representative, representation. I know I'm getting older now, but I always wanted them to be treated fairly, because you go around other districts, especially go down the valley, down the Turrick Valley, many of those small boroughs, they're down there, they lose all of their representation. And I always wanted to make sure Trafford is treated fairly, and it has been treated fairly. But that's, that's the reason why I've stayed on so long. Good question.
Yeah, very good questions, gentlemen.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Berg, and my question is, why can't we run, why can't we eat in class?
Why can't you eat in class?
We have a food allergy policy, and unfortunately, well, we have some children who can't handle the different foods because it makes them very sick, so we want to make sure these kids are healthy and stay safe.
Why are there only two fifth grade?
Want to state your name?
I'm Tommy Hobon. Why are there only two fifth grade classes?
At sunrise? We have two fifth grades at sunrise, Level Green and Trafford Elementary, basically due to enrollment, number of kids. I think our largest building has four, which is Harrison Park, but it's based on enrollment needs.
You all meet up someday in, in high school.
How much money do you get paid on, to be on the school board?
Zero.
School board members, it's voluntary position, so we do not get paid. There's more than, there are more things more important and money in life. And I think Mr. Petrusi had mentioned it, seeing these kids go through, you know, watching my own daughter progress through, through the school is just an amazing experience.
Why can't we run in the halls?
Go ahead. It goes back to the safety. Soon as students started running, you might start tripping and accidentally hitting each other, and it goes back to just being, and actually, when I was a kid, I remember my principal screaming, "No running in the hallway." So it goes back about 45 years to 48.
Wow, that long.
Long.
He's a youngster, Bill.
We had dirt floors.
Why is there more than one nurse?
Probably based on size of the schools, too.
Yeah.
Why is there more than one nurse?
School code sets how many school nurses you can have for a district. We qualify for three, based on the size of about 4,000. So we actually have three main nurses, and all the other nurses still have the same credentials. They're considered health techs.
Gentlemen, you know where the state capitol is? You know, who's the state capitol of Pennsylvania? Okay, so in Harrisburg, there's some people there that we call representatives and senators. They make a lot of the rules that the school districts follow, just as a follow-up question to Tommy. Based on their recommendations or rules, that's why we have the number of nurses that we have due to the number of students that we have.
Can I ask a question?
Are you guys done with your questions?
Yeah.
Those were all great questions.
Very good questions.
Very good.
Can I ask you one question?
Very good.
Because I like it, and it gives me something to do.
Answer.
No, I'm just kidding. But that's good, that's great.
Just a reminder, we're always looking for service projects and help, so as you stay involved in the Scouts, and if you ever could do like an Eagle Scout project someday, keep us in mind. A lot of my projects, we got through all the scholarships, were done by Scouts as part of their Eagle Scouts project, and I welcome any help we can get.
236, I represent St. Barbara's. These guys are Cub Scouts, ready to move on up into February, it's Boy Scouts, so a few more years, they may be able to do a service project.
That was too bad, I had to go in the military.
I throw it out early.
How many Boy Scout troops are there in Penn Township?
Oh, four or five out here, just one out at Level Green.
One at Level Green, I know, one out here.
One for every elementary.
Okay. Oh, is that how that works?
Yeah. Well, there was two, and that made recruiting difficult, and recruiting against another pack.
A lot of kids, new members coming in, is that pretty good?
Yeah. We're... But, sunrise. We are, I go in, I have 10 minutes at classroom, minus three, or rockets, 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 and they go, Cub Scouts, and they go, rockets, 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 Cub Scouts. I'm going to get a, I'll go with many, because I think we got six in our garden, at least all of 10. They move up, some kids move on to sports, or move, I move to sports, but that's affecting.
Did you boys march in the fall festival parade?
You guys, Shelby did Michael Retriever. And, and Inver Sidecar, yeah.
I do remember that.
Yeah, I saw you. I loved it. I loved your goggles.
You marched in the parade? Good, you guys did a really good job.
Thank you.
I was kind of in charge of corralling all the scouts. You did a good job.
Yeah, we also had a week-long weekend up at Camp Hot Stoga.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, boys.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for being prepared. I think that's the first time since I've been on here that somebody's come to ask questions, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Hopefully, it'll help you understand a little bit more about who we are and what we do. And thank you for the PAC leaders. So you're volunteering yourself, so you guys can teach them, you know, why you volunteer, so you're part of the community as well. Thank you.
It's very similar to what you guys do. You don't do it for the kids, but you do it for yourself. More for you than it is for the kids. That's why we volunteer, because it feels good.
Lots of opportunities to volunteer in the community, so thank you.
Something larger than yourself.
Yeah. I was a Trippit, so my parents brought three kids, and they did it.
He's a Trippit. What's his last name?
What's your last name, young man?
Mine?
Yeah.
I went to Baldwin.
I was going to say, okay, all right.
I went to Baldwin.
Okay. I graduated '96.
You're way younger than me.
No. She was 95.
Right, 95, that's it. I grew up off Blasteron Road.
Yeah, my, my mother was a Gaborian, and Willa, off the street.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that wasn't far from us. That name sounds familiar.
What's your two brothers?
Did I really say that?
What are your two brothers? That'd be...
One is a...
Look like you?
Yep. I'm a pretty one.
Well, you, I don't know if you guys have to stay for the entire meeting to fulfill the requirement. If you don't, you feel free to go ahead and be on your way. I know it's a school night, so thank you, guys, for coming.
Very good.
We're going to move back to the meeting. May I have a motion to approve the Treasury Report and the High School Extracurricular Fund Report?
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll-call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the payment of bills for the month of October, 2018?
Motion. Second. Question.
Question being called for. This is a roll-call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. No business, Joan?
No, no business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting. We discussed teachers' negotiations, personnel matters concerning staffing, and confidential student matters. We also received information on budget update and buildings and grounds, from the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
This is the one you guys...
To bear with us while we work through some technical difficulties.
Okay, I think...
We have budget and finance, is that what's up first?
A, whatever A is.
Athletics, extracurricular.
Page two's missing, Mr. President.
Yes, well, I have to look one there as well. Athletics and extracurricular, Dr. Koschka.
I do have a few items, Mr. President. Okay, you can take, yeah. Move to approve the following: Volunteer coaches effective immediately. Extracurricular volunteers must have their Act 34-151 waivers on file at the administrative building. All coaching volunteers must have Act 34-151 and 114 on waiver, on file with the athletic director. Kyle Hugas-Stratton, volunteer girls volleyball coach. James Brim, volunteer girls basketball coach.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to employ the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary certification documentation and the acceptance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Employment is effective for the 2018-19 season unless otherwise noted. Martha Coma, co-sponsor FBLA, a salary per negotiated PTA agreement. Christina Wukic, co-sponsor FBLA, at a salary per negotiated PTA agreement. Lacey Wagner, yearbook sponsor of Penn Medal, at a salary per negotiated PTA agreement. And Olivia Rizzo, Girls Varsity Assistant Basketball Coach, district-wide, at a salary per negotiated PTA/EA agreement.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. Question being called for, this is a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then finally moved to accept the following resignation. James Brim, Girls' Varsity Assistant Basketball Coach and eighth-grade girls' basketball coach at Trafford Middle School, effective immediately. Brian Hyland, eighth-grade girls' assistant basketball coach at Penn Middle School, effective immediately. Olivia Rizzo, junior high girls' basketball coach, effective immediately.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for, this is a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, yeah.
Motion carried.
That'll be all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Koshko. Budget and finance, Mr. Stovall.
Uh, I have a couple items, Mr. President. Move to authorize the administration to make payments amounting to fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for credits earned by professional employees in accordance with a negotiated agreement. The list of the, uh, was presented to the board showing the individual payments due and will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, move to authorize the following to serve as the WIU Joint Purchasing Consortium for multipurpose paper and fuel. Mr. Brett Lego, representative, and Ms. Joan Weiner, uh, alternative representative.
Second. Question.
Question being called for, this is a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to grant the administration permission to advertise jointly as a member of the Westmoreland IU Joint Purchasing Consortium for the purchase of supplies in the following categories for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, multipurpose paper, and unleaded gasoline and diesel fuel.
Second. Second. Question.
Question being called for, this is a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall. Buildings and grounds and safety, Mr. Jim Matarazzo.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Employee relations, negotiations, transportation, Ms. Ising.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve a six-year contract with the Penn Trafford Education Association, effective July first, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. A copied agreement will become a part of the official board minutes.
Second. Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppo, uh, aye, opposed?
No.
Gentlemen, would you please pull the board?
Mrs. Ising?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Kachasek?
Aye.
Dr. Koschko?
Aye.
Mr. Bill Leonard?
Point of privilege.
Uh, Mr. Dallas. Mr. Matarazzo?
I'd also like to explain why my no vote.
That's what I was asking.
I'd like to have a minute to explain why. May I do that?
Can we, can we, we'll take, yeah, we'll take the full poll, then we'll come back.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Nemec?
Yes.
Mr. Petrusi?
Yes.
And Mr. Stovall?
Yes.
For point, for, for clarity of the record, I want to be certain. Uh, Mr. Leonard, you're voting no, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be, make sure that the record was clear.
Okay, uh, well, do I do that and then give them the opportunity?
If you wish, I mean, the, uh, it passes six-two. Uh, so the, the motion passes, but if you wish to allow them to make comment, fine.
We have to prove it, we have to fill it out, yeah.
We just voted no. Motion, motion pass.
Six-two.
I don't know which one of you gentlemen wanted to go first, that's fine.
I'll be, I'll be, I mean, it'll be pretty, um, this was a long time, this wasn't an easy decision for me. I'm new to the board, but that's not an excuse. Uh, I, and I, I just, I tried to be brave. If it was, if it was a lesser amount of years, my term's four years. It's a year thing.
Service.
And I, you know, didn't want it to be disrupted with the children, and I really appreciate what you guys have done with the negotiating stuff. I just let it go at that, okay? It was just, it was a vote of conscience, it was a really tough one for me to make, but I had to go with, go with how I felt.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Mr. Matarazzo?
Yes, I, from a public standpoint, I have been a public school teacher for ten years at Gateway High School, and master's education, so education is very important to me. But I think the public needs to know what's in the contract. Unfortunately, it's after we voted for it, but what's in it? Because some people, rightly so, concerned are teachers being treated fairly. Are we being bad on our teachers? Where are we? I think the public needs to know. And our average teacher's salary this year was seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. New contract will be seventy-three thousand. In two thousand twenty-three, the average teacher's salary will be eighty-seven thousand. I think that's pretty good, I think it's fair. I see three points in the, in voting for this. One, for the teachers. Those teachers under seventeen years, and those teacher above. The contract is very top-heavy. Most of the money's going to the top. An example, a fifteen-year teacher in the step program, this year would earn sixty-five thousand, twenty-seven dollars. Across the hall could be another teacher that's been twenty years. That teacher, regardless of whether they got a good satisfactory or bad rating, gonna make ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars. It's a difference of thirty-one thousand bucks, just because of a step program. I have trouble with that, and as a young teacher, I went through this and feel the same way. For the students, I have concern, because a lot of things we can't afford for our kids, such as discussion on air conditioning. Our teachers, and I support you, they have filed a grievance about the school. We had rooms up to ninety-five degrees. Our cafeterias in our elementary are over ninety degrees. We can't afford air conditioning right now. We're looking at it, we're gonna do everything we can, but I look at money, it's like, I think that's a priority. I look at the athletic program. Uh, you're seeing some backstops finally being put in the athletic field. Our, our athletic teams, baseball and softball, have been using Little League base, uh, backyard, uh, backstops, finally working on that. Training room, we need a training room down at the Warrior Center. Imagine a kid having to go all the way up to the high school, well, I see some things there. Community standpoint, we're one of the few communities that only has a half-day kindergarten. All the other communities have full day, we have half-day. Why? Having porta-johns up behind our stadium, maybe a small thing, but I think it'd be nice if we had places that our, our seniors could actually go after a football game, during a football game, to a restroom, rather than having to go all the way down to concession stand. Handicap access has been another issue being dealt with. Concern about teachers' future, well, what about retirement pay, Jim? I mean, it's one thing, you're talking about this stuff now, but, uh, do you realize the retirement program? The average teacher in our district is gonna make eighty-seven-five a year for the rest of their life. At age fifty, say you started school at twenty-two, you became a teacher, got out of college, I'm twenty-two years old, thirty-five years later, I'm fifty-seven, full retirement. Full retirement, you make two-point-five percent times every year you taught. So two-point-five times thirty-five, eighty-seven-point-five. If you make an average salary of a hundred thousand the last three years of your contract, eighty-seven-five times a hundred thousand, oh, that's eighty-seven-five a year from age fifty-seven for the rest of your life. That's not bad. Sick days, teachers get ten sick days, they're cumulative. What, thirty-five years, I could have three hundred and fifty days, maybe three hundred are saved. They're gonna get eighty-eight dollars per sick day unused? That's a pretty hefty check, I'll round it off to eighty bucks. Say eighty bucks times three hundred, that's twenty-four thousand dollars when you retire. And also, retirement, we're gonna pay your insurance until you reach Medicare. Six-year contract with a guaranteed raise. I don't know how many people in our community that can say for the next six years, I'm gonna definitely get a raise regardless of what the economy does. We will. So those are things that I have concern, and being fair to the community, the kids, and the younger teachers that I feel are gonna be, it's sort of like, wait your time, your money will come, but later on. We're, I think, right now at the lowest starting salaries and among the highest in top salaries. So for those reasons, my vote was no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo.
Did I say anything out of? Figures are correct? John? Okay, just wanted to make sure it wasn't pointing as much as facts.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo. Uh, just in fairness, before we move on, uh, just giving the opportunity, any board member who voted yes, if they wanted to say something now, if not, that's fine, too.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the committee, you know, Mr. Nemec and Mrs. Ising, uh, were instrumental in, in, uh, working on the contract, you know. Uh, Mr. Stovall, Mr. Koshko came in at the end, Mr. Petrusi helped out quite a bit, so thank you for, uh, for all your work. It's a lot of headaches, uh, thank you to, to Sean and, uh, Bill and Jeff back there. There was a lot of time, a lot of energy put to it, so we got our heads together and finally made it work, so thanks to everyone.
Absolutely, you can't forget Joan, who put up with the grudge of all of us.
Absolutely. And did a great job. Joan's been great, you're right.
Joan has been great. Last week, we had a four-and-a-half-hour session, and we had Joan with her laptop, running her calculations, under pressure, as we're sitting there, okay, we gotta get something back to them. So Joan did wonderfully.
It was an honor working with everyone.
Um, we certainly appreciate it. It was a very, um, it was a long process. Um, for the record, we started in, um, January. Uh, we finished last Tuesday, per se, you know, we had a tentative agreement. Uh, we had several meetings, um, several hours, and probably a hundred emails and various offers going back and forth. But I think in the end, um, both sides had to compromise. And I guess that's what makes a fair deal in the long run.
I'd like to thank, uh, Mrs. Ising for being the spokesperson, and Mr. Nemec for being the research person. And, uh, because I've been here before, and you saved the school district many, much, many thousands of dollars. If we hadn't hired a negotiator, you're talking between two and three hundred dollars an hour. And, uh, you're counting this hour, starting back in January, you're well up in the twenty-thousand-dollar bracket. Maybe pushing thirty thousand. And this is, um, you guys worked hard, you did a great job, I thought it was very fair. I mean, you calculated all the percentages and the average retirements, it came out, like, last contract, and it was two-point-five percent per year. After retirement, it's already come out to one-point-four percent over four years, and it averages out to about, oh, I figured math, about almost four percent a year. And that is four tenths of a percent of a year, and that is very good. But, uh, thank you, you two in particular.
Thank you.
For all the extra time and extra effort that you put in. It's not fun, a lot of grief, a lot of frustration, now you got your reward, but great job. The kids' education will continue, and, um, the education was good. Last year, I understand our scores were second in the county, and I think that's very good, very good. Keep everything rolling the right way, and hats off to you. That's all.
Ising, is that all you have this evening?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, that is all I have.
Well, we appreciate that, and again, I apologize for not mentioning myself, but I do thank the, uh, whole negotiating team, every, every person on it. And, uh, it's, uh, in my opinion, it's good for the community to, uh, come, come to agreements and compromise, and, uh, we can move on to educating the students, so that's what, that's what we're here for. I believe the next item up, uh, next committee is food service. Mr. Nemec?
Nothing to do tonight, Mr. President.
Mr. Nemec? Now I'm gonna have to get the tea sheet.
No, I got it.
I got it, here we go. Personnel curriculum, who could forget Mr. Petrusi?
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, move to approve the list of dish substitutes and resigning substitute teachers for the month of October two thousand eighteen?
Second. Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, Ms. Boring, if you don't have a copy of all these, I, you have, you have a copy of all these? I'll gladly give you my copy at the end, okay? Move to employ the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation except for Act thirty-four, one fifty-one, one fourteen waivers to call with Pennsylvania, within thirty days. I'll just read the names and the dates, you can follow, a couple of, two dates, um, Hope, Hope Coburn, Beth Barosik, Olivia Rizzo, Mary Annie Ferrari. Oh, this one here's a good one. Peter Yanopoulos, a good Greek name. Abigail Stewart, Susan Simon, and Susan Simon again.
Second. Question.
Question being called for, this is a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Some of those positions were super subs, so I do appreciate it, because we do have a sub shortage.
Okay, that, that's, I think every district does have that.
Yeah, you didn't say what the position, I just wanted to kind of thank you for letting us do that.
I move to accept the following resignations. Michelle Bodai, Sandra Kerna, Patricia Shishko, and Diane Zoller.
Second. Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to approve the following leave requests. Samantha Foster, Carrie Gutwald, Brian Holland, Maria MacArthur, Ashley Pushunka.
Second. Question.
Question being called for, this is a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to authorize the administration to approve any new parent volunteers in attendance in accordance with the past practices and policies. Volunteers abused only where teachers and their principal approve, and all volunteers of Act thirty-four, one fifty-one, and one fourteen clearances on file.
Second. Question.
Question being called for, this is a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Policy, public relations, legislative title two, Mr. Matarazzo.
Like to move to accept and file the minutes of the Superintendent's Informational Committee meeting, held on September fourth, two thousand eighteen.
Second, question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Unless someone has a page six for me. Hey, Jim, here, Jim, here, I got it.
And I got it.
Here, Jim. Thank you, sir. Like to move to rescind the following board operation guidelines and administrative regulations, as Dr. Harris shared earlier. Absenteeism from voting, criteria for evaluation textbooks, emergency care plan, food allergies, medication guidelines, and clinical guidelines for, uh, net, who, what? Anaphylaxis. Anaphylaxis, thank you.
Anaphylactic.
Well, I wish I hadn't said that.
Is that it?
That's it.
Second. Question.
Question being called for, this is a roll call vote.
Is he up three?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all, Mr. President.
Yeah, I believe I messed up.
Oh.
I don't believe you read this one right here.
No.
Yeah, we got one, one that's on the back of the other page, sorry.
Okay. Also move to tenderly approve the following board policies and administrative regulations. Now, this is what Dr. Harris talked about, public notice, official board minutes, absent, abstention for conflict of interest, adoption of textbooks, view evaluation and selection of textbooks, textbook evaluation, textbook recommendation, disposal of textbooks, unmanned aircraft slash drones. That's it.
Second. Question.
Question being called for, this is a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And that shall be it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo. Taxes, insurance, census, Mr. Bill Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. President. President, nothing new at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Solicitorate report, Mr. Rungo.
The written report was distributed to the board prior to this evening's meeting, I have nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Rungo. PTA representative, Mr. Sean Reineer.
Uh, Mr. Kachasek, I'd like to reply to Mr. Matarazzo's, uh, earlier comments by May.
Floor is yours.
Um, first off, if the board would like to contribute more money to the contract, we'd be glad to put it down to the bottom steps. Uh, the contract that we thought we had agreed upon in August, had more money for the younger teachers. Uh, we could not get that percentage. But what was on the table was good enough to bring back, and I did not think was worth going on strike over, that we agreed to last Tuesday. The last contract, teachers that taught the salary scale took a two-year freeze. So teachers like your daughter could come up the salary scale and not get frozen before she reached ninety thousand dollars. We did that, we sacrificed for them to come up. The board last contract vigorously wanted a total freeze for everybody, which would have really destroyed her, her career earnings. As a matter of fact, the contentious point this time was on a sal, was on a step freeze on year one, which we thought that your daughter would not have to take. On top of that.
Who's daughter are you referring to?
Your daughter?
She's not on step one.
Okay, well, I, but she would have been frozen on step either way.
Yeah, that's getting a little contentious.
Step, 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 step one through fifteen.
Mr. Reineer, it, it, just do me a favor.
Yes.
Be more general in what you want to say, don't direct anything to the board members.
Sure.
I apologize, Mr. Rungo, as I stopped it.
The eighty-seven thousand average salary that Mr. Matarazzo was just talking about, takes into account that nobody will retire in six years, which is absolutely unreasonable. Uh, the district raised taxes one-point-five mils, I believe, last year, correct? So if they needed to generate more revenue, they could have. We have the highest per capita earnings in the county, and when we, we have some of the, we have the lowest tax, some of the lowest taxes in the county, and yet we don't raise them whenever we should. I have eighty-five teachers at the top of the salary scale right now, but at the end of six years, I'm gonna have a hundred and forty-five. Now, why wouldn't I put the money at the top? And by the way, you're right, your pension is based on your best years. So somebody coming up, whether they're young, or in the middle, or older, they're gonna benefit by having a higher pension cost the rest of their life. And their career earnings, if they live twenty years after retirement, will be better. So that is why I put the money there, and I stand by it.
Hey, may I, may I respond?
Let's just, uh, let me, let me ask you this. Let's ask. We came to an agreement, I understand that you both have your opinions based on, what was that?